We're going to call this meeting to order now if it's 6:30. At this time, we would like to welcome you all to our regular April meeting. We ask that you all stand until we are going to do a long and silent call by the budget of late. During this long and silent, we'd like to remember the family of Mr. Marty Jackson. He was very much loved by this community, our school system, the WPD, and his family is very much loved and adored by our school system. So we ask that you all please remember them during this time. Now, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the creation and the death of all.
This time, it is your ear, the agenda. And then call five options of the agenda. All right, motion by Mr. Bennett. No, seven, if I miss pause. All those in favor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Consider approval of minutes for March 26, 2024 regular meeting and March 27, 2024 special meeting. Everybody here for those? All right, thank you, Miss Bennett. Anybody like to make a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 26, 2024 regular meeting and March 27, 2024 special meeting.
Motion by Ms. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Now, we are... Okay. Now, we're at the exciting part, and I will turn it over to Mr. Howard and Ms. Bush, the Clark County Public Schools recognition.
We normally don't have so many people with us for these board meetings, so we welcome all of you. We love seeing so many people here, so...
Thank you for attending this evening to celebrate and recognize the hard work, creativity, talent, sportsmanship, and dedication from so many diverse groups. Sponsors or coaches, when you hear your program or team, would you please make your way down to the stage? Students, if you hear your individual name, whole club, program, or team, please make your way down to the stage. You will receive a certificate, and Mrs. Crosby will be taking a photo, so if you'll wait just a minute and you can see the beautiful area that you'll be taking that photo. We are going to start with our girls soccer. Ms. Jan Horn will be standing in for Coach Hanson. The 2023-24 season, the girls went seven, six, and three. They won the region championship and the district championship. At the state level, unfortunately, they lost in the first round. Great things are happening with this team in the years to come. This is your 2023-24 George Rogers Clark High School team. Next, we have the GRC High School Girls Basketball. Coach Graham. Coach Graham has been the head coach for 12 years. The 2023-24 team had a record of 30 and 5 this year. They also were the Lexington Catholic Christmas Tournament champs, the 40th district champ, the 10th regional champ, and also made it to Rupp Arena for the Sweet 16. In Coach Graham's tenure, the girls' record stands with 200 runs and 91 wins, 104 losses, with eight regional championships. Eight Sweet 16s, seven Elite 8s, three Final Fours. Helping prepare young ladies to achieve greatness, also having former players who have college graduates and being successful in the biggest game ever, which is life. This is your 2023-24 George Rogers Clark High School Girls passing off. In this summer, his record is 64, 29, 13. The 2023-24 boys went 14, 6, and 2 for this season. They won the district championship for the first time in 16 years. Every year, I would have the privilege to coach at GRC. We have made strides in the right direction, and this is a testament to the players and the community. He would also like to give a shout-out, which he cannot do all by himself, he said, to his coaching staff, Coach Ross, and Coach Kep, Ferris, and the booster organization who wholeheartedly support everything they do. This is the 2023-24 George Rogers Clark High School Soccer Boys Team. STLP. The STLP facilitator, Jennifer Turley, would like to give a huge shout-out to each individual school coach for their hard work, dedication, and helping STLP students to complete their projects. We had a large number of Clark County students this year compete at the state semifinalist level. We have Conkright, Ms. Kristen Pruitt, who is their sponsor, and Mr. John Tyler Patrick, who won the first state semifinalist book cover. Another first state semifinalist for Creative Digital Art is for Cheer, is Adora Williams. Ms. Samara Bennett for Digital Instruction. We also have a first state semifinalist in Creative Digital Art for Banker, who is Hannah Kirkman, who is his sponsor. Digital Illustration is both Addison Boyd and Ms. Amelia Sabisti. Ms. Carrie Kay, if you're in the audience, we also, she is a sponsor of George Rogers Clark, and we would like to have the state semifinalist Liam Perdoo, who is GRC's winner for Logo Design. The second category is Live Challenges. We have Maddie Rainey, Kevin Robinson, Chase Cash, Bowen Cash, Abby Blair, Sadie Frazier. They are for Cheer in Cinemania. Their sponsor is Adora Williams. We would also like to thank the preschool, who is starting their morning news show with Hannah Abner, Jill Blanton, and Karen Harder. Next category for Live Challenges, we have Jack Ergerman. That's right. Maddie Rainey, Chase Cash, Bowen Cash, Sadie Frazier. This is for Sephiroth Heroes. Adora Williams is the sponsor. Showcase Projects semifinalist for Cardinals, Austin Rewards, Discipline Cisco. We have Luke Clark, Miles, and Jayden Lopez, and then it's sponsored by Demoneka Parton. Also sponsored by Demoneka Parton is the semifinalist for Showcase Projects in Star Reading, Elizabeth Coats, Emily Fulton, and Jan Sutherland. The Showcase Projects also had state finalists that made it to the big stage. There are 25 finalists only in this category. And Kristen Banks and Natalie Disney of Clark County Public Schools made it to one of the top 25 for Cardinal News with this Demoneka Parton. Also with Ms. Demoneka Parton is Haley Formak to come, and Michaela Singleton as sponsors. RDC had a student that received an award at the state level in creative design, digital art design, under 3D design. I'll get it straight in, sorry. Students create a three-dimensional representation of an object using digital tools and software. They are free to utilize any 3D modeling designer of their choice, but all files must be entered as a screen capture that shows all aspects of the design. This year, Clark County Public Schools had a second-place state-level winner with Saul Solski from RDC. George Rogers Clark had three students that received awards at the state level in Creative Digital Art. One is for Feature Video, which is first place at the state level for Ms. Ava Woolam and Emma Rose. In Animation, Clark County Public Schools had the first-place state winner in Isaiah Epperside. Our next category has 77 students that celebrated getting their industry cert in healthcare core certificate. Ms. Rebecca Prater, if you could please make your way forward. She is a sponsored teacher. She has taught five years at the Allied Health Instructor position, and she has been with Clark County Public Schools for 11 years. All of you students in healthcare core, would you please come forward? And just to say, Ms. Rebecca, this is the largest group we have had so far. Congratulations. If Ms. Lauren Hardy and Ms. Heather Abner could make it to the front, please. Ms. Hardy has taught in or been an employee at the Clark County Public Schools for six years, and she has taught for three years at the Health Science Department as the instructor. Ms. Heather Abner has taught with us for 14 and a half years as the Health Science instructor. This group is CRNA-MNA program. After successful completion of 59 hours of lab and 16 hours of clinicals in a long-term care facility, these students, which are 38 students, have completed and received their industry certification. Students from the CRNA and MNA program, if you will please make your way forward. Ms. James Willoughby, if you would please make your way to the stage. This is our teacher. He is in his third year as a welding instructor here for Clark County Public Schools. Do not laugh at me, I had to ask him what these acronyms mean. So we have American Welding Society winners, Gas Metal Arc Welding, and Shield Metal Arc Welding. There are 18 students this evening that have received their industry cert, and if you would please make it to the stage for those three categories. All of the welding. Ms. Andrew Keaton, he is in his third year at a computer science instructor. HDI Customer Service Representative is his program, one of his programs. He has to provide functional knowledge of how to operate a customer service role, particularly in the health desk environment. We have 12 students whom we will celebrate this evening for receiving their industry cert. If Mr. Keaton and his 12 young men could please make it to the stage. And young lady, I'm so sorry. Make your way to the stage. He is in his fourth year as an automotive instructor. ACE certification gives students basic knowledge of automotive repair and leads their way to a better technician and customer care representative. They're celebrating this evening for their industry certifications. If you will please come to the front. Next is our Skills USA. If Mr. James Willoughby, Kevin Warner, and Aaron Keaton has sponsored, would you please come back to the stage? We have nine students that we will celebrate this evening in different areas. Skills USA is the number-one workforce development organization for students. Skills USA empowers students to become skilled professionals, career-ready leaders, and responsible community members. We have Job Skills Demo Open for Logan Barrett, Job Skills Demo A for Lydia Schenault, Relative Technical Math for Joan Toward, Ian Solis for welding, Hayden Jackson for MLR, Brayden Lewis for carpentry, Eden Selby for Carpentry One, Jacob Davidson for speaking, and Carl Andreessen for welding sculpture. If you could please make your way to the... We have special recognition for our Skills USA state competition winners. We have two students, Lydia Schenault, who was made a Kentucky State Officer, and Joan Toward, who placed first in the Relative Technical Math Competition. The next program is COSA, which stands for Future Health Professionals. If Ms. Heather Abner and Lauren Hardy could please make their way to the stage. COSA provides a unique program of leadership development... COSAP provides a unique program of leadership development, motivation, and recognition for students enrolled in health science, allied health programs, or an interest to pursue careers in health professions. This is a hundred percent healthcare, not a club, but a way to a perfect adult life. We have seven students who want to celebrate this evening for their industry certs. Kayla Dixon for second place Medical Assisting, Joaquin Hill, third place Glamour Medicine, Grayson Fletcher, fourth place Family Medicine Physician, Emily Warren, first place Forensic Science, Sophie Coleman, first place Forensic Science, Madeline Combs, fourth place Human Growth and Development, and Maddie Gowing, fourth place Nutrition. Our next program is Physical Therapy. The instructor is Rebecca Crater. Students are required to shadow the athletic trainer and complete internship clinics at local healthcare facilities totaling one hundred hours while also passing a written exam. We have five students who were successful in this area. Hayden Heath, Madeline Combs, Ryan Jackson, Carter Mater, and Jacob Tipton. If you would please make your way to the stage. If you would please make your way to the stage. This is the second part of his curriculum, and this is Information Support Services, or IT principles. We have five students who will celebrate their industry certs this evening. Emma Seals, Ryan Sears, Bryce Shortridge, Nolan Snodder, and Mason Wright. Residential Carpentry is our next program. If you just recall, would please come. Residential Carpentry Assistant prepares individuals to apply technical knowledge and skills to layout, cut, fabrication, erect, install, and repair wooden structures. We have four students to celebrate this evening. Luke Henry, Mason Wills, Reagan Williams, and Daniel Kubekin. The second part of Carpentry is Commercial. Skilled Trades Commercial Carpentry Track prepares apprenticeship programs to create streamlined post-secondary opportunities with registered apprentice training providers. We have four students to celebrate. Joshua Hall, Brandon Lewis, Tanner Miller, and Corey Reed. If you please make your way. On this team is the GRC High School Swim Team. Helen Richardson is the sponsor of that team. I'm not quite sure if she's here tonight, so Mr. Foley, if you would please come up. This is our 2023-24 Skate Swimming All Fire. Ethan Hatfield, if you are here, can you please make your way to the set? Our next group is our George Rogers Park High School Fishing Team. This is sponsored by Billy Beamer. If you would please make your way to the front. Bryce Alphrey and Hayden Arden are both freshmen here at GRC. Both boys have been on the team for three years. For this twenty-three-24 season, both boys are now qualified for the Bass High School National Championship in July at Lake Chickapawa in Dayton, Tennessee. Our next group is Kuna. If Mr. Jeffrey Barnett could please make his way. Mr. Barnett has been with us for eight years, and he has been the sponsor of Kuna for two. The 2023-24 season ended with individual and a state recognition for outstanding ambassador McKinley Harper, for distinguished advocate Tyron Holtz, preceding officer, presiding officer of the International Court of Justice Joan Toward. Also, the school was recognized as a premier delegation school in an outstanding countryside, which was also constructed by McKinley Harper. The JAC Program, Jobs for America's Brotherhood, is sponsored by James Stoltz. Mr. Stoltz would also like you to personally thank Mr. Luke Foley and Superintendent Howard for their continued support for this program and the students involved. In March 2024, students competed at the state level. They participated in four different categories. Financial Literacy, which is Carter Gibson, Business Plan, placing second at the state level, is Leah Daniels, Ms. Tatum. I hope I said that right. Cameron Turley and Alavon. You can make your way down if you'd like. Ashton Tucker, Carter Gibson, and Brayden White. Outstanding Chapter at the State Level placing third, Jamie Katz, Jackson Spencer, and Debbie Davis. Mr. Stoltz and his students just returned from St. Louis from the JAC National Career Development Conference. The GRC JAC program was one of only five schools that were recognized nationally at the conference. This is your 2023-24 JAC State Program winners. At this time, we would like to recognize a community member. Ms. Susan Richardson Bishop. We recognize this bishop this evening for an outstanding community partner. Susan has always been an advocate for students and one of the number-one cardinal fans you'll meet in Clark County. Although a DECO, through a DECO and partnering with employers, Susan is instrumental in Clark County Public Schools students' next step to their workforce. Please join me in appreciation to Ms. Bishop and a DECO for her hard work and caring for our students.
Well, thank you all for coming. We would like to hold you here to call a five-minute recess and let you all get up and get settled and everything.
Ms. Hardy. How's it going?
How's it going?
I'm sorry.
I have a phone call, so please report. No. But the sample isn't.
All right, we are back in session at 7:23 PM and we are at Public Comment. And Ms. Latoya Gordon, you are up.
My name is Latoya Gordon. I am actually here on the time to organize. One thing I have is the football field. Are you athletes are not able to practice on the field? The field actually has holes. I do believe they try to patch or fill the holes, but when it's been so much rain, you can actually still fill them. So they're having to practice on the side, but they can't even do their lineups properly because they don't have that actual field. Another concern is are the equipment. They don't have the proper or enough equipment for the team. I do believe the parents are actually having to buy pants for the athletes. They're short on knee pads. I think they're using GRC helmets because they can't get their helmets until next year. They needing mouth guards. It's just a lot of things that they are lacking at RDC in their athletic. That's basically all that I have. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Didn't know if you all was aware, but like I said, just wanted to bring it to your attention of some of the concerns and the lack of in that department. Thank you.
And we say, do they have a booster?
No, ma'am.
I hope that they didn't have.
No, it's just hard skin.
And when you said practice on the sides, you mean practice in the middle of the track? Is that that grassy? Is that what you're talking about? Not as best a field, but actual the track grass.
Where do they play their games?
I think it's either away or I'm not sure.
They actually play a lot of their games at the stadium. They've been playing at the stadium. Their actual game field, they played games in last year, but they didn't have it here on campus. But we'll definitely take those and go and check these out.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are. Student Party Instructional Service acknowledges, say safety is instructional spotlight. Ms. Kelly.
Tonight for our instructional spotlight, we will be highlighting GRC and also the ATC.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Very nice. Appreciate the welcome. Appreciate the invitation to come up here and talk to you all just for a few minutes. And I can't start without, number one, thanking you all for your support. Everything I've been here to talk to you about at GRC is because we have the support board and support editor, my central office, and some pretty phenomenal teachers involved with us. We kind of had a hard time heading this down to something that we wanted to talk about for our instructional spotlight because we had so many pockets of great things that happened at GRC. So we wanted to kind of present to you all an overarching idea of the sense of, you know, opportunity that GRC provides to our students. So, and we do that in a couple ways. The first is college readiness. I want to talk about college readiness for just a second. Currently, right now at GRC, we have 531 students enrolled in AP courses. 531, that's a lot of kids that enroll in AP opportunities. We have 441 students enrolled in dual credit courses on campus. That's within the building. 97 students enrolled in dual credit courses at BCTC and something that I feel like is pretty awesome this year, we have a total of 12, potentially more, students that are going to graduate with an associate's degree before our high school graduations because of our community partnerships that we've been on the build with BCTC, MSU, and EKU. As of last week, and this number is steadily growing, we still have three weeks of school left, we have 250 seniors that are college ready. On the career readiness side of things, we have just some of our pathways, if you're all unfamiliar, we have agriculture pathways, business, health sciences, engineering, biomedical science, and RTC. And within those pathways, we have 112 industry certification seniors and 144 seniors who are career ready as of today. So, that number steadily grows towards the end of this year. And like I said, we still have another three weeks left of school. So, we'll hope that we can continue to provide those opportunities in the future. We can't do that without our partners in the hallway in the ATC with Mr. Coy all.
Good afternoon. Good to see you all again. We've got several things at the ATC that we're a little proud of, and we are proud of ensuring that all of those students experience a lot of variety with multiple pathways to make sure that they're ready for their interest after school, so or after high school. But we've got five programs currently. We're looking at possibly bringing industrial maintenance back, so there will be six programs. But we've got 10 different pathways available. I currently have my corporate instructor left at Christmas, so I have a long-term sub, who's a retired corporate instructor that's been running Harrison County every day. This is a God scene. And so, we've been able to take all those students out to the land, and so it's like nothing to ever change. We have 782 students currently enrolled in the ATC at the time that I made this slide. We have 203 students enrolled in dual credit through BCTC, 218 concentrator students, that means that they have two or more classes. 97 industry certs that were awarded, and that was just seniors alone. And so, we have eight in a program set that's still passed. Did this. And then we have 183 students with completed status for a month. And then currently, well, this is three weeks ago, my post-secondary grade is at 60%. So, to nines, we did 173, all those students that I had were 173 certs that we just did this year. And so, when I made this slide, I hadn't got to do, or I hadn't been able to conquer this Frager's Allen Ethical Class. And so, there was eighty something I did there. And then going through the data, I have roughly 12 to capture when I was going through the post-secondary grades chart that you didn't, that the high school didn't get an extra bonus point for, and we're trying to find those students and capture them. And so, those are 12 that I have, and I probably have another 20 that we'll try to get before the end of the year. And so, we're really proud of what we've been able to accomplish this year with, you know, some of the challenges that we face. Next year, I know that dual credit will go up. Some of my classes weren't able to do dual credit in the fall, but we were able to get Daniel back in his frame, so we'll have those at Christmas next year. So, that's what we've been doing. Thanks for seeing us here. We really appreciate it. That's what we give us.
I have a challenge for you.
Huh?
I have a challenge for you.
What was my challenge?
We're going to get into cosmetology.
Cosmetology is very, very tough because of the amount of hours that are required in hand and also with some of the scheduling of the students because they've got to meet so many hours.
If we started though, and then turned loose, they could get so many in. The number of kids that we see that come through to tell us they want to go to cosmetology school, none of us.
Well, now, again, too, I don't know if we couldn't have a partnership with the CTE school. And so, you know, then we wouldn't have to worry about that now. Again, too, I think that Jefferson County may be one of the only districts in the state that does a cosmetology program. And so, but those are the only ones in that area.
I just, for being on here for 12 years, I can't tell you how many people walked in front of me and said, that's what they want to be. It would be nice if we could at least start them. Because when I, of course, it's been a long time. They did that where I could get out early and go on to cosmetology. So, I left at 11 o'clock every day. So, I graduated high school in cosmetology school the same year. So.
We'll accept the challenge, sure. We'll figure it out. We, Mr. Coy, Mr. Coy right there.
Well, I've already got work and it's working on it.
Go cards.
Yeah. I might hold some chairs.
Thank you, sir. A lot of Chris, thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's what I got for you. Yeah. I got, yeah. We also have a challenge for Whitehead, too. Thank you, Marson. What was it? I have a petition.
Oh.
I have a request for that. Sorry, Kelly. I'm not being rude. Continue on.
I'm just ready for the next.
Consider applicable certified evaluation plan 2024-2025.
As we're wrapping up the school year, we're also planning ahead for the next school year, so bringing before you the certified evaluation plan for 24-25. We have made a few revisions from the current plan. We do have a committee that meets three times a year, and we have also gathered stakeholder input through surveys, so all certified staff have been surveyed in order to gain their input. We have made a few revisions, but agree before you the new certified plans that we can begin July 1 with this effective evaluation. Do you have any questions?
It's very nice to look at. Amazing. Invite you to make a motion. I'll make a motion. Motion by Ms. Coy. One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Consider applicable classified evaluation plan.
So, very similar to the same process, we have a classified evaluation plan that we brought before you tonight. The same process was followed. We do have a committee to get input, and we also had stakeholder surveys that were administered to all classified staffs, so we make sure that all voices are heard. A lot of the process that the classified has been streamlined so that we are going digital with the evaluation plan format for next school year. So, I bring to you the handbook for 24-25 to be approved.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm not wishing to be approved.
Motion by Mr. Kinnon. Second by Mr. Coach. You all in favor of that aye?
Aye.
Motion carries about a zero. Consider naming a building behind RDC.
So, as you all are aware, the phase rollout plan of the Innovation Center has been in full swing. Phase one has been the renovation and the transition of Phoenix Academy. Phase two will be the renovation and the transition of CVA, our Cardinal Virtual Academy, our STEM lab, STEM teachers, and flex space. And then phase three will be the expansion of pathways to serve all of our secondary students. So, tonight, we ask the process of naming this building begin. While Phoenix Academy, CVA, and other innovative initiatives will be held in that building and will remain their current names. So, the Phoenix Academy will remain the Phoenix Academy. CVA will remain the Cardinal Virtual Academy. We propose that we name the actual building that these items are held in. Currently, this building is referred to as the Building Behind RDC, the old ATC, the old Technology Building. So, we would like to actually put a name to the building that houses these innovation projects and pathways that we offer. So, tonight, we propose releasing a survey to gather stakeholder input so that everybody can have their voices be heard. And then we bring back all the input that we gather, bring back to the board for you all's consideration of naming the building.
That's what we've done with all the other buildings. I'm good with that. Did we not discuss at one time that renaming Phoenix completely? Did I not hear that done right then?
Not that I can recall. I know talking to the staff, they're not all that interested, but that would actually be a different process because actually the school has a school code that we give to KD, so we'd have to put a proposal together and send that to them versus the building.
And just hearing from some, I've talked to some of those kids, I think they're kind of interested in making a renaming at some point in time, just because of the reputation that it used to have. It's changed so much through the years. So, but I mean, if the staff's not interested, it's just something that maybe there should be a survey to opt for that group. And see if they would be interested in renaming it. So, if they're not, if they're all happy, then I'm good with it. But it had, I mean, Phoenix Academy has changed from when you and I started and what you had as principal there to what it is now. It's went a long way. So, but I'm fine. Doing the survey.
Through the process.
Yes. That began. Just send out the survey, right?
Yes, we'll send out the survey on a lecture that goes out to the board report and possibly posting that so you can really get the second. And we'll bring those results out.
Are you going to do like top, or how are you going to do it? Just send it out, see what people submit and then?
We can break back all the feedbacks that you all can see. All the third.
On the motions, uh, begin the process of naming the building behind RDC.
Thank you so much. Motion by Mr. Bruce and second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Last time they brought back like the five most common answers ahead, so you didn't have like thirty names coming in.
That's probably the process.
Yes, but.
Yeah, we, we could do that. We can kind of get the highlights and, and um, I thought you, we trigger, we can kind of be direct on this.
That's not my field of expertise. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay. Consider approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Phoenix Academy calendar, Mr. Jay McCann.
So after uh it set the calendar for the next two years for uh what kind of schools, I had to work with uh DJJ as I require an extended calendar, thirty-three days per day. So I've been working on that with them and then submitted for the next two years for this.
Mr. King, did they actually, did they come to school those extra thirty-three days?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. At least we can probably know that earlier. That's our issue.
I make a motion to approve the both twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six Phoenix Academy calendar.
I'll see.
Motion by Mr. Coy, second by Mr. Bush. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Snail, consider approval for the purchase of six school buses.
Uh, if you look at the spreadsheet there, we've gotten the nation fleet, uh, pretty much everything from the two thousand sixteen model year and older needs to be replaced, uh, in my opinion, by the next six years. If we buy it this year on this year's pricing, it'll save us roughly a hundred thousand dollars as opposed to waiting until next year.
Bravity.
Any questions, comments, Mr. Snail? On the motion? Be the best with air pressure.
Everybody is loving the air.
Everybody's willing to order here. And then with us.
That is, yes.
And the, and the other thing, I mean, I have to Mr. Howard, is this is the most cost-effective time to go ahead and order at least buses because prices are, the directors are off.
Significant.
I make this second.
Did you make the motion, Billy? Okay, I'm following. You're just making second letter by my motion. All right, motion by Mr. Bennett, second by this hall. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Review local planning committee process and consider selection of CCPS Board of Education members to serve on the LPC state. I'm making a motion.
All right, I heard you talking about challenges, so.
So you got one, right?
We, we've got a good challenge here. Uh, local planning committee, I, I want to give just a brief overview because I know that we've got some newer board members. Every four years, uh, Clark County along with every other school has to create and update, uh, make revisions to their district facility plan. And they do this through the local planning committee. That committee has twenty members total. Uh, the superintendent being a four designated, four teachers, district facility director, three community leaders, one local building, so only official, four parents, four building administrators, one central office staff and one board member. So, and all of this I'm sharing is, is in uh what's required by the state, whatever it is. Uh, membership and requirements, if you're going to the next slide for the LPC, uh, each member that is on the LPC has to be a resident of the local district in, in which state it has to serve. So even if it's a parent or a principal or anybody, they still have to reside in, in the local district unless a person could not be found that resides there. But I don't think we're going to be comfortable with that. All schools must be represented before multiple representation occurs. Four of the members must be part of their school's SPM council. Parent representative uh must be selected by the PTO, PTA or whatever their uh parent organization is within the school. The selection of teacher representatives shall be made by a process developed by the district's teaching staff that ensures the opportunity of the teachers to have a voice in this process. Uh, so that'll be something that will take nominations of teachers that are interested. Uh, the local Board of Education shall select business community leaders to serve on the LPC. An advertisement shall be made for business community leader nominees for whom the local Board of Education shall select three representatives. So we'll advertise, ask for people that are willing to uh be part of this and then we'll bring that to you all and, and uh make that selection. Uh, a little bit of the, the, uh, some of the work that the LPC does. Uh, the first orientation session, who would select the chairperson, advice chair, uh, go over the process, the regulatory requirements, the review, the current district facility plan, all funding, uh, cost of delivery of services and uh local demographics and their population. And this is after the architect and engineering uh review of all of our facilities has been completed. Uh, after that, we'll hold a series of meetings. We, we have to have three meetings total. This orientation counts as one. We have another meeting where we kind of create a draft, DFP. We send it off to KDE for them to review that draft. They send it back and then we have, have to have at least a third meeting after then to vote after they've reviewed, made any comments, to vote on the DFP. Then it would go to voting board, which is you all to approve. Along the way, we'll research other information to take into account the comprehensive school improvement plan, trust foundations, student assessment, educational programs, uh, bond and capacity, project capacity, any of those other things that could impact uh the, uh, district facility plan. The, uh, the last uh slide there is the timeline. So we came to the March Board meeting and asked uh for approval for the roster on to be our consultant, the architect, uh, firm to review all our facilities and the capacities and the age of roofs and all of that just uh, uh, and Timmy from KSPA, KSPR, he was going to serve, serve as our consultant. And he has, uh, before he was and was the last district facility plan. At this point, uh, our roster on is going to start uh evaluating building and site conditions, creating inventories, analyzing building and site needs, provide drawings if needed, identify deficiencies and provide projected or estimated construction cost to correct any deficiencies. We will probably, so tonight I'm going to ask if there's a volunteer from the board to serve. And then the next step would be over the summer to advertise, to start getting the rest of our committee in place so that we can have that orientation meeting either late July, early August, depending on, you know, people's calendars and if we, if we can do it before school starts back, that'd be great. If not, we'll do it right after school starts back. Uh, then we'll have our second meeting, work on the draft. Uh, my goal is to get that sent off to KDE by September, uh, to be able to live the review, make comments, send it back to us, meet again in October and have that to the board by the October board meeting uh to vote on. Once we do that, uh, we, we send that back to KDE for final approval in November. So that, it, it is kind of a tight timeline, um, although there are no penalties necessarily. We're not done by December first, but uh I sure as hell am tracking that happening. Any questions? Got that. And do I have any, uh, anyone interested in serving on the LPC from the board? Is that something that I want to think about or have somebody ready tonight?
I'll do it.
So did you?
I've done it twice before. Well, you didn't, like, you're already swamped. You're swamped. I know you don't want to miss it.
Well, I think, Ms. Ritchie, I think it's important, you know, you have been here during all of the projects over the past thirteen years. I think it's important that you, you know what, what's been talked about before, so. I, I have all confidence that you would represent us and, and do a good job. And you, you.
I do have time. My God, it's so serious.
All right, thank you very much.
And just, just for the record, those meetings are all open to the public. So any board member that would want to come to be in the back row for the process, we will welcome them to the, to the next school.
Those, those will be advertised and posted.
Maybe a group setting, the place could come with them.
He's supportive.
Yeah. Cheer us on, Braden. I'm going to be there with us.
That's good.
All right. So you don't need a buck for that, right?
Okay.
All right. Review and consider approval of construction documents with Clark County, Phoenix Academy building renovations. Twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-nine.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to uh Brian Buckner, who's also running, to kind of go over these next, you know, few items.
Good evening. I know, come on, use the microphone, that's everywhere there, man. Uh, the, uh, the last thing that we had, we, we kind of did a deep dive on the progress of Phoenix Academy building, uh, the renovations and what we were looking at doing there. So where we are in the, in the project phase right now is we are nearing the end of construction documents. Uh, due to the size and scope of this project, we actually condensed uh the last two phases of design, which are design development, construction documentation. We put those together into a single phase to kind of fast track this so that we can get this out the door in bid to allow for work to begin at the beginning of summer with schools out there at the end of the day. So, right now, and I can certainly walk through the drawings. Um, I know I probably talked way too much in the last board meeting, so I'm a little taping myself back a little bit, but if there's anything that we'd like to look at in terms of the, the four planets or the scope of the project, I'm, I'm certainly happy to kind of walk through that. But uh, right now, what we would be looking for is consideration approval of the construction documentation, which will allow us to send the project out to bid. So assuming this gets approval, our plan right now is that tomorrow by the end of the day, we would upload our latest set of construction, what we call bid documents. We'll go to Liturgy and that will be available for contractor pickup. We will then start the bidding phase of the project, so that's going to allow general contractors to, you know, both have time to review the drawings. We will initiate and host a pre-bid meeting that I'm going to schedule here for the next, let's say, two and a half weeks. That will give us time as an office to start to contact the general contractor base here around, around the area to try to draw us interest in this. That's going to be really critical based on the size, scope, let's be of this project, um, as well as the condensed timeline of construction. There's some critical elements of this building that need to be done over the summer and to allow, to allow students to come back in in August, uh, while the rest of the construction is, is wrapped up. So we're going to try to aim for about May eighth, right now, for a pre-bid conference with any of the contractors that pick up the job sets. So we will be hosting a pre-bid meeting at the Phoenix Academy. That's going to allow contractors an opportunity before the bid to see the building, to ask any questions, um, get on the same page if there's any documentation that we need to issue as far as an addenda to the bid documents. You know, correct or address anything that's, that's unclear or needs to be verified. So that, that'll be a really great opportunity for anybody that's interested in this particular project to come out, have, have things up around, take a look at the existing conditions uh and what's going to be required and, because we do have a lot of selective demolition uh and some unique space, space issues there. Oh, sorry, Ed?
When did you say that would be?
We're looking to schedule that for May eighth right now. So that'll be, uh, it's two Wednesday, it's July. So after the pre-bid, that will allow us to issue the final addenda items that allow the contractors a little bit of time to kind of put together their final bid. And then we would be doing a bid opening on May twenty-fourth. Right now, the intention plan is to have that bid opening per floor office, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes, sir.
Um, we've, we've kind of been doing that here lately, so, um, that also gives that ahead of the, right here will be scheduled board meeting event. So assuming that all goes well with the bidding, we have a, we have a number, we have a long bid that we're interested in, uh, we would be asking that to be approved at the May twenty-fourth meeting, which will then allow us to bidding construction very shortly thereafter. So that kind of aligns really well with the school, uh, students out of the building and contractors being allowed to have access to that building through the duration of the summer. Completely, at least the phase one portion of the world. Um, primarily what we're concerned with is the restrooms, um, getting access to sanitary line, the new water line, uh, and the expansion of the restrooms of that facility. And as everybody, I think everybody's kind of, at least, you know, from previous conversations, the, the general scope of this building is to go into two existing vocational lab spaces that were made in that building. They would be outfitted, uh, as Ms. Bennett mentioned earlier, we've got the CBA TRT STEM program will kind of encapsulate one of the existing lab spaces. So there'll be two classrooms, one of them will be a STEM focused kind of one lab. The other space will be a larger STEM flex lab. So, um, outfitted with, with the lighting and repaint with the entire existing structure, but leave a lot of it open. So that'll be, I think, a really great, it's more like industrial space, but, um, with the upgraded lighting, corn reels coming down from the ceiling and have a lot of versatility and flexibility in that space for, uh, multiple different types of programming. That space also has an outdoor, um, overhead sectional door that can open up to the rear, so if they need to do any kind of angle outdoor work, that will kind of allows that to happen. The STEM workroom also will have a, a black sectional door that can open up onto the main flex lab. So, uh, that, that's really great just in terms of space versatility and use of the storage capacity that we have in the STEM workroom. CBA will also be in that area. Uh, we're also talking about the restroom expansion that will learn to read lobby of the building. The other existing vocational lab will be turned over into Phoenix Academy program. So one additional classroom for, you know, typically we'll seat about twelve to sixteen students in those spaces, but it'll be a full-size classroom, uh, as well as a, uh, Phoenix Academy kind of root floor. So we'll have that split between room work areas, also soft seating and, um, you know, kind of hybrid function that's, but we're adding in four additional offices, new, some new additional storage space. And then a big, you know, the, the largest kind of ballot item on this project is the HVAC renovation of the building. So HVAC lighting, there's going to be some ceiling replacements as a result of all of that. And again, we can walk through drawings if anybody's interested, um, in, in seeing those. But otherwise, I'm going to be able to answer any questions out of the, sort of, we do have, in, in this package that you'll see, we've got structural engineer drawings, we've got the architectural drawings, and we have NEP drawings that give us that. So again, this is the, this sheet is the Cody E. Rest Plain sheet, but this kind of gives you a general overview of the areas that we're doing the work on the building. The areas are gray. We are not touching those at the moment as part of this project. It's, so this is the, um, the, the phase that you'll see, as you know, the, the kind of main entrance, you'll see the extended restrooms there to the, just to the plain east of the main entrance there at the bottom. And then just to the north of that, when you get past the lobby, you'll see the two large vocational spaces that have now been opened up in two new classrooms. And then just to the north of that, when you get past the lobby, you'll see the two large vocational spaces that have now been opened up in two D classrooms throughout the space.
What time did you say you were gonna open this up on May eighth?
Sorry?
What time on May eighth?
So right now, we're looking at between two and two-thirty for the pre-bid. So that that will allow the kind of tailoring off of students in the building that a lot of contractors have a little more, you know, we're back to kind of moving through those cases. And I'll I'll I will be present for that meeting as well as our engineers and contractors. We'll be there so we can answer any questions that might come up. We'll be able to document anything that we see issued as a bid.
I'm going to be able to make the motions right through the construction documents for the Clark County Phoenix Academy Building renovations. Motion by Ms. Dorsey.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Pittman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose motion carries five to zero. Order. Review and consider approval of revised BG one form for the Clark County Phoenix Academy Building renovation, paging number twenty-four dash one twenty-nine.
So this is the revised BG one form for this project. Uh the BG one is is a form used to kind of initiate a construction project for districts. So there's an initiate BG one at the very beginning of onset of this project to kind of kick this off as far as having a K D E fat pack right there in the state. So as we move through this process and we are able to complete cost estimates, uh we do tend to revise those BG one estimates as we move through. This is a really good time to do that. At the end of the construction document phase, we have a much uh harder look at the cost estimate for the project. We have better numbers coming in from the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers, especially on a project like this, as well as structural items. So what we have done is we've taken the revised cost estimate for this building, we've put that into the BG one form. That also changes some of the line items on that form. That changes the A E fee, the architect and engineer fee. That is part of, it's tied to the K D E fee schedule for construction projects. So that's a fixed item, but it is based on the construction amount of the project. We also have some additional soft costs, such as furniture procurement, computers, uh there's also a five percent contingency to that construction cost. So if you skip down to the second page here, this is the kind of primary information for BG one. So you'll see that the cost estimate for this project has gone up some. So the initial total construction cost we were looking at was fifteen, was one million five hundred thousand dollars. So a couple things caused the increase in the construction estimate here. One of which is the water line serving the building is undersized for the capacity of the toilets over the building. So even if we had looked at doing a tankless or a tank-style fixture, we would have still had to uh increase the water line size to the building. We're already getting into construction in that area because there's a collapse of the sanitary line coming out of the building. So while we're doing this, in order to be able to expand the restroom facilities and add the proper amount of toiletting and lavatories with the building based on the occupancy of the building, we are going to have to trench to an existing location out near R B C, close to the R B C building, to branch off the new water line to increase that. So a large amount of cost is is obviously coming from the plumbing side of things. The other caveat here is that every review of the existing classroom in the on the kind of far northwest corner of the building, uh those classroom walls that were added do not go all the way up to deck. They don't go all the way up to the s- the roof structure of the building. So there's an H V A C unit that sits above that, and there's there's limited access to that space. We initially had a look at doing the rest of the classroom walls that same way so that we didn't need to run all the way up to deck with those. There's some concern over the added framing over those walls to support the A C T, the ceiling grid system that comes down, as well as the above-ceiling H V A C units. The concern comes over providing access and it burdening somebody being able to build and store something up there. It's not designed for that type of load. Uh and so as a result, the engineer had the design for a live room scenario. We felt that it would be a better idea to just go ahead and run those walls all the way up to deck. It would be better acoustically for the classrooms, um and provide some some safety insurance and liability perspective for sortages. So both of those things are kind of aligned, um really account for the increase in the cost estimate. And then again, you know, that kind of triples down to the A E fee, the construction contingency, and the rest of the soft cost items. So right now, the total project cost for this, all of this included, is just over two million dollars, as you see here on the form. Now note that as part of the 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 bid, you know, we're aiming for as far as the bid for the G Cs, because we're trying to give that one point seven eight three million dollars. The rest of that, again, is soft cost that we added under that pre-bid schedule.
Any questions? Comments? Questions? Motion by Mr. Dorsey.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Pittman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. And review and consider approval of the BG two, the BG three for the Clark County Phoenix Academy Building renovation, paging twenty-four dash one twenty-nine.
So both of these forms are something that's typically done as part of the design and development process and would be approved at a D D review approval meeting by the board. Because we combined those two phases of design into the kind of sealed construction document phase, we're bringing those two all now. The BG two form is just probably not of much interest. That's for K D E's interest as far as what's happening in the projects. It's what we call an add-on specification. It sets up energy goals. We talked about some finishes in the building. It's a multi-page document, uh overall scope. And we also would include the alternates as part of the project. So add alternates that would be included in this particular project include uh get one of the perfect oil hardware systems that match up with the rest of the district and the rest of the building. Um the second alternate that we have in the building is to replace all of the windows in the building. So that's a large dollar cost item. We'd like to kind of break things off like that as far as add alternative, because that gives you all as the district additional flexibility on on bid day.
Questions?
Do you have any idea how old the windows are?
They're originally built. So they they've got some, and they're they're indicative of of windows that were installed right around the time of building was installed. Um you know, the the big issue with those obviously is it's just a marble. Um you know, there's there's mostly some paint, uh some of the operable vents aren't working on most of those windows. We also have some conditions at the base on the front of the building. So if you're kind of approaching behind R B C, you'll see those panels that are at the base of that building. None of those are insulated. And so the the benefit here, if if it comes in in a way that we're able to accept that as an alternate, um you know, we would see some some absolute benefit value into the program just in terms of the thermal overload and the sustainability in terms of the energy usage of the building, and kind of just bring up some of those conditions as well.
But that's true, it's bid out. We'll bring that back to the board today and they would make a decision on that.
I mean, we'll have, so this this will have to, because it's an add-alternate on bid day, the contractors are gonna have to look down the price for both of those items. So they're gonna say, here's our base bid for the project, here's alternate one, here's alternate number two, and here's what that would cost. And so that's something that actually goes into the valuation of the bids that come in. Pretty infrequent, but sometimes you may have a a base bid that could be lower, but with the alternates added, you may have another contractor making this the second line, um that actually came out of the way to pursue that.
Do you think the building was built at the same time when the original G R C was built, or was it built later?
I believe it was built later.
I know it was there in the eighties.
It was, yeah, it I I believe it, but I'd have to go back and look at the original date on the the R S, on R B C. But it was, yeah, like sixties or whatever. It was around that time.
Well, no, you you got it. It's through, you took, you gave us a really toward, explained it to us thoroughly back in the winter. Um and this is just putting it into into the paperwork now. So it's, you've been very helpful in having to help us understand and let us have those things. And it has lots of potential.
Yes, it does. This is actually, uh we brought in material with the the D F P process, the L C process. Um as far as the pay fix survey, this is the one building that we'll actually have to go and do a real kind of audit and assessment on, maybe you know, kind of do a real audit. Just because this is now much more of an district asset, and so um this is a side to the previous. The BG three also, sorry, the the BG three itself is just a a further breakdown cost estimate, and you'll see that on the documents. It lines up with the revised BG one.
Alright, motion by Mr. Pittman. Second by Mr. Dorsey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose motion carries five to zero. Consider approval of change orders for the new Clark County preschool project.
So John Hayne with CoDell was not able to make tonight. So if there's any questions on these items, I can certainly cover them. Um this is the 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 first set of change orders that we've had on the preschool project to date. Um so this is kind of a a bulk set of change orders. The way that this is broken out, if you go through this, that's because this is a construction management project. This is broken out between bid packages. Those bid packages are assigned to individual subcontractors. So um we can kind of talk about specific items that were issued as a proposal request. We had nine proposal requests that had been issued since the beginning of the project. Some of those were for credits back to the project, some of those were obviously adds. The one large one that takes up about fifty percent of the total change order amount is the access drive to skirt stations, that rear, that rear bus lot there. So um I know it's a little bit confusing when we're looking at it in the the way that this is set up based on bid packages. So a single change order made by three or four different contractors, and that that's one of them. So you can look at that cost and it will be kind of broken out between three of the subcontractors based on the based on the required work that's being performed. Um but that one is really the kind of big tick item on the change orders. Another one was an adjustment to the primary electrical routing to the building that was driven by K U based on where they were gonna be setting some new service to a pole. Um electrical hazards just tend to be pretty expensive. I think that one was a total of about thirteen thousand dollars for additional line work and connections to the building. So a lot of the other ones are much smaller items. We had some adjustments to the roof system to benefit to kind of benefit warranty for going over the storm shelter. We had some items where we made some adjustments to some doors. We added a knock box for the front entrance for the fire department access to keys. So there there's a handful of things that are in there. Like I said, I can certainly walk through any of those. The total amount of that, though, at the at the end of the day, when you look at that amount of change orders to date, is less than one percent of the construction contract cost right now, which is great. Um so I think it's like point five six percent when we check the balance. So the fact preschool at this point is right around seventy percent lead is really, really great. And so we've gone through a lot of the unknown process of this um project, which was a lot of the site, you know, the site, the soils, getting into the area that we knew had heavy um forest activity of soil. That always leads to some concerns with some unknowns on the job side, and we we have moved through that very well um in terms of um in terms of where the building has been placed and some of the geotechnical information that we had, um worked out really well in this case. So it's gone really well. I mean, CoDell has added a good pulse on the subcontractors and um like I said, if there's anything you all have questions on, I can kind of walk through that a little bit better. We have discussed that moving forward, though, no more kind of bulk, multiple proposal requests. We need a single change order to the board, just because we like to kind of track this a little bit better, um provides a little bit better, you know, feedback at time to make decisions. So if anything else kind of comes up for now, we're gonna try to issue those monthly if and when we have.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. White, Mr. Christie, Mr. Carroll, all been very good at negotiating a lot of these change orders with some of the contractors, so uh you know, getting some things taken care of. Should have been done maybe the first time. So they've been very good at having to get something on there.
This is actually really good. It is far along and just now get change orders. So I mean, even just many change orders is not bad. I think that's not worse. Are you having fun yet, Mr. Christie?
Uh he summed it up. There are the ones that are on there, the biggest ones, that wrote knock box, the next one is give it wig on every building, it's been a theory, and it's always there. Pretty phenomenal, good at this point, on the bid, five, six. There's a lot that's not there. Talk about, Brandon mentioned it's been negotiated completely out.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, this is really, really good. You've all done a great job. I mean, this is all that we have so far. You're saying, what do you say, seventy percent done? I mean, that's that's great.
Well, so today, this, well, this week, we started putting windows, putting windows in. We've got the first three rows of the bridge around the Brandon building now, which means now the rear, the back building, and then start following the implementation. And there in the roof, there's no roof, there's siding on roof, and then at the end, starting to dry out, we keep trying to dry out all of your color. The next thirty days, six, four, six weeks, you're gonna see a huge change in the door.
And if Mayor Ju would be able to have another, have a, in this, the project.
And I think the board would be interested in in the maybe to work on this. I can re-roll them out. So we'll get that set up. I'll try.
We've been taking the the preschool staff each week. We've been taking about ten deep breaks. So the teachers are seeing the building, it's kind of getting a little more active later too, and we're intending to do that each week, make proof and improve.
So I'll I'll work with you guys. I'll give it a couple different dates, and if one day doesn't work, we can get you guys down there. These guys, Mr. Christie, they'll be great to put work in. So, thank you, guys.
That'd be great. Alright, would you may like to make a motion to consider approval of change orders for the new, these have to be done separately. Becky, are they good to go all at once?
I think they can go all at once because they're all attached, as I know.
Consider approval of change orders for the new Clark County preschool project. Motion by Mr. Pittman. Second by Mr. Pittman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, per opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all so much. Hey, consider approval stacking allocations for this for year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I know, we're almost there.
Almost, almost, I'll be quick. So this is just standard uh procedure we got to now present. If we had updated anything to present to the boards by May, the S B M councils by May first. So you can see in the yellow, we, the original number that we projected for enrollment, it from September. And then we reran numbers here in March to see where we stood. We're actually down about fifty-two in enrollment between all of the schools. So we decided to stick with what we had already done. That's not enough to change for us to change teachers among all the buildings. So we are going to move forward in the next school year with a stacking allocation that you all have already presented with. And that's what will be reflected in our budget as far as payroll goes on in May, see the ten of this budget. So we just need the official approval from you all, and then principals can counter, councils know. Applications to start to hear the part.
Motion by Mr. Dorsey. Council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries five to zero. An announcement of monthly C C P S, nine twelve day.
So as normal, we're not too far off from our percentages when you're looking at our general fund revenues and expenditures total. And we're just one percent down from this time last year. We're two percent up in expenditures, which is to be expected with being back full from um here and of increased enrollment. Uh taxes overall, we're about four percent down. Um but again, I have no doubts that we will buy the company here in, like, all of our taxes. Again, shout out to the sheriff. We're right at ninety-nine percent, um ninety-eight percent um with the check we received in April. We're at seventy-five percent with our media's over the check, which you see. This is reflected on this financial position.
Any questions?
Any questions?
We're good. Authorized payments of salary that you can't title. Here it is. Motion, Madam, Mr. Dorsey? Second, Madam, Mr. Higgins, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries back to zero. Superintendents report.
Sure, just a couple of things, uh, quickly, we're, we're coming to the end of the year. Uh, we've got graduation, uh, May 17th, uh, Friday night, 7 to 5 on a big field where I, I'm hoping the entirety of Clark County goes together to celebrate. About 450, uh, shining stars are gonna go out in the world and do great things. Uh, it's one of my favorite nights of the entire year. I've done some hand exercises, gonna shake off 450 hands, probably high fives, and probably some hugs too. Uh, a lot of those students graduating, well, my students when I was the district president. So it's, um, gosh, I don't wanna get super emotional, we're not there yet, so I hope so. Um, starting state testing in the next couple of weeks, that'll be the last 15 days. Um, and then, uh, we'll, we'll do some celebrating and, uh, close the year as we plan. We'll talk about some of the plans that we move forward in, in May, June for professional level and those like that. Uh, the other thing, I want to kind of give the board an opportunity. Uh, the board, uh, went to a national conference. Um, and we, I, I attended also. I picked up a lot of good things, but also a lot of affirmation, uh, things that as a district we've put in place in the last couple of years. Um, they're really innovative and, and world-class. Um, as I sit through session after session, some things, uh, a whole football coach used to tell me, if you go to a conference and learn a tremendous amount, you probably did a whole lot going in. So, uh, it was good to pick up a thing or two here and there. Also, again, uh, the work that we're doing here, getting our kids and our community should be blessed. It's like the facilities here. Um, so again, I'll, I'll open it up if anybody wants to kind of add anything or any sessions that, uh, kind of spoke to their mind or any further comments. But I want to make sure that we give you guys enough to.
Well, I've given a shout out to our technology department. We are, we are pretty far ahead based on, I know there was one class that Mr. Dorsey and Ms. Higgins and I attended that we were all just looking at each other going, we're way ahead of where we are in this class. So, uh, we were. Yeah, I mean, if we were so far, you know, that class was so far behind where we are that we needed just in there to teach. Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot, a lot of the sessions that we, like, we meant to, were the stuff that we had, we had been past. You know, like, we've, we've already gone through this, figured it out, I would hardly have passed it. So it was, it was great to see that where we stand or where we sit as far as the, the, the whole representation. There's, uh, there's a lot that we, we have to be, we're blessed.
Yeah, a lot of that. Uh, done that, done that, done that? Oh, there's something interesting. Maybe we ought to consider that, but, uh, yeah, I think we're way far ahead of a lot of school districts.
I, um, got to do some listening sessions with the National Education Association, and it was about, um, kind of focusing on disability, ensuring inclusion, taking care of students. But there was also a component of taking care of our staff. And I could answer all the questions, um, about our students because we have, we have IEPs, IELTS, we have excellent, you know, department that takes care of all that. And our, um, HR has, you know, Dr. Parrish has done so many things for retention and recruitment. But the one area that kind of stuck in my mind was what are, what are we doing to make sure our, our teachers take care of themselves? And that's what I took to Mr. Howard during the, um, during the conference. So I think that's a challenge for us to see, you know, we've given them all these things and resources and just to make sure that taking care of themselves. Um, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a social worker and in my code of ethics, it, it calls for us to take care of ourselves, self-care. So I think, you know, that's something we want to make sure that we're able to do for our staff too.
Sure.
The other thing, um, I felt like a very small-town person going over that very large lake, like I'm getting chills thinking about it right now. Driving over that was, I, it, it was like driving over the ocean. We were on that bridge for 25 minutes, it felt like.
It was sad, and we counted it.
It was sad. Now, already.
Yeah, well, Jake didn't make use of my case, he was very talented.
But there were some really cool keynote speakers. Ruby Bridges, where she is the first, um, African-American child to, um, integrate the schools in the South. She spoke, I was highly impressed with her. Um, and the gentleman on the last day, I'm not sure what his name was, but he was a really cool speaker. He was part of, was it PepsiCo? Is that?
Yeah, one of his, his career is Blenheim.
Blenheim, yes. So he was a jailer and he went to like a vice president. So just that kind of inspiration. But, um, the one other thing, I, I really enjoyed it. I think there's so many cool classes, but one thing that I'm, I'm very proud of are, um, our police, our SROs. Um, some of the, uh, districts were talking about just using an officer from the local department. I mean, and I'm like, we have one in our school and we have seasoned police officers in our system.
And then there were a couple of times that we discussed like how, what, what they do when, when they have to get so far away. And then we got like one person between like three schools, we were like, oh, gosh.
Yeah, so as, I'm a, I am, you know, my father was a police officer when I was growing up. Uh, and then my brother-in-law just retired last year. And so I come from a police family and a lot of our SROs I've known since I was a little girl. Um, very proud of them, chief Paul again, and all of the other SROs that we have. So we, we should, we should be proud. I was proud of our district as I was talking to people. I bet people from California, uh, South Dakota, Alaska, I'm sure you met.
Uh, New York, I've seen a bunch of them from New York. And they were just amazed with the things we had in our district.
Yeah, so you all think that we're connected and we're able to have all these awesome things. And it's because of the hard work of, um, Mr. Howard and his staff and all of our staff that we have, so.
The SRO, I brought that up. One of the things that, when I was talking to them in New York, they do the explorer program. They're the SROs. And they work with the kids and they go in and they pick some of the kids that need a boost or hadn't kind of gone in the wrong direction and the SROs pick them up. And you can see that and know what direction they're heading in. And they start working with them once, I thought that was kind of me. And I meant to tell you that the other day when we were talking, that, that was one thing that I did get from them. But they say, and of course in New York, there's quite a bit going on, but they do, they, they let their SROs focus in and that's their explorer. They don't work with the police department, they work with the, the SROs in building. So, just an option. Got you, Marty. Get you busy. But no, it was great and, I mean, it was, it was so busy that you more than seen each other. I mean, I've never seen Dor, not Billy, but I did see Billy pass the file once, but I don't think he was on me.
Yeah, Mr. Howard had to stop, like, literally grab my arm because I was, I had my earbit in, walking. There's lots of walking every day, 10 to 15,000 steps a day. Um, it was really a good thing. Very busy town, so much different than our wonderful small home.
Yes.
I was happy to get home.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It was definitely great.
It was, yes. Yeah, I mean, going to the local is great, but going to the national ones, I mean, you just learn so much more different things from it. And it's great to see how different things we are.
Well, it's different.
Yeah.
It's not the same. In a way, you, you go through a lot of global, uh, every, you know, everybody comes together from Kentucky and around Kentucky, sharing ideas there, whereas this is a national, so I figured there's so many different, um, perspectives and topics and law areas that it can, it's a, you know, things to kind of re-anger or what people are doing. Uh, it's, yeah, it was, it was definitely, it was great.
I went into one class though and they asked me where I was from and they loved my accent. I was, and I said Clark County and they said, I'm from at your superintendent, he loves the cards. And I'm like, okay. So, yes, he was still bumbling and yelling, go cards. So. He was, like, he made it fresh, like, do we?
Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Do we need to take anything off the consent? Anybody have any questions? No, uh, Dora was confused. She thought there was something that I missed. No, it's not. Tammy didn't have anything for us to worry about. They referred us living here out.
Saving it for May.
No, she didn't talk to us tonight. Uh, so nothing, nobody has anything they want to walk me to? Not anybody like to make a motion? Motion, Madam, Mr. Bit. I'll second that. All of the voters say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries back to zero. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second, Madam, Mr. Lewis, all in, every care?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries back to zero. You are adjourned. Take care.